Madam Vice Chair, it is 6:00 PM. We are ready to get started with our study session.
Thank you. The classroom Montgomery County Study Session is called to order. Mr. House?
Yes ma'am, the first item on the agenda is a routine surplus property item that is in reference to 20 school buses that will be decommissioned and scrapped. So this is again, like I said, a routine item and these buses will not only be decommissioned, but they will be scrapped. Be glad to answer any questions at this time in reference to item number one. Moving on to item number two. Dr. Angela Huff and both Sean Imperatris will share in the duties of presenting this particular item. So I'll turn it over to both of them this time.
Good evening, Board Members and Mr. House. This presentation will provide the latest registration information with the Enrollment Center and the K-12 Virtual School. As Mr. House stated, Dr. Imperatris and I will be presenting this presentation together. So beginning with the Enrollment Center. Let's see. I think Mr. Holman may have taken the presentation down. There we go. All right, beginning with the Enrollment Center. We opened the Enrollment Center on June 10th, 2019, and it was basically open as a centralized location to register students and obtain documentation and resources. Due to COVID-19, the Enrollment Center was closed to the public between March 16th and May 27th, and we reopened the Enrollment Center May 28th by appointment only. Total visitors to the Enrollment Center between May 28th and July 28th were 385, but we also had an additional 519 requests online for records and transcripts, and those were submitted and it brought our total to 904. But out of those 385 families that walked into the Enrollment Center, the reason for their visit was to enroll their student. 294 persons came in for that. Records request was 90, and then one request for the Student Services Department. Since May 1st, there have been 2,819 student records imported into Power School for new enrollments. Of these 2,819, 845 were children that were military-connected families, so about 30%. Largest number of online enrollments by school since May 1st. Rossview with 185, Sango with 168, Oakland with 162, Glen Allen 138, and West Creek 137. Online pre-enrollments by grade since May 1st. Pre-K, there's been 57 total, and you can see the other grade levels there with pre-enrollment since May 1st.
I'd like to talk to you about the K-12 Virtual School option. We've had this option for about eight years, but it was about 165 students. So you know, as COVID has hit and we developed a reopening plan, we wanted to expand this option for our families. Talked to a lot of those families. It's a comprehensive kindergarten through 12th grade virtual instruction program at no cost to families. We believe that Clarksville Montgomery County school teachers and administrators are the best to serve our students. So many of these parents have contacted us about this virtual option. Many of their families have underlying health conditions, and they really haven't been out of the house since about March 12th, and they were looking for another option. So that certainly encouraged us to provide that option for them. So we sent out an online form to each household, asking parents and guardians to indicate their preference between traditional and virtual school for their student. And for those parents and guardians who did not have a response, the school's front offices are working on garnering that response right now. And if you look at the data, we've been pretty highly successful on the next slide with our percentages of return. So you see about 13,306, 36% of the students or parents that responded. 52% chose traditional. We still have 10% out there that we're working very hard to get. And then we are a community that is mobile. So we have about 1% that are not returning to CM-CSS, but this is very important to us. We want to our students, we believe we're the best prepared to educate them. So we're working very hard on garnering that under 10%. That's what the data looks like right now. Questions about that virtual school option, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Dr. Imperatris. The next item on the agenda, of course, Madam Vice Chair. I'll pass it back over to you for community, excuse me, County Commissioner comments.
Thank you. County Commissioners, are there any comments at this time? Board Members, do you have comments?
I think that your request for the options came in real well. When you look at 36%, they want to go virtual and 52 online. They give us a space that I need, I think, to actually be able to do a lot more social distancing in our district. And I'm very proud that you guys have been pros at this so far.
And I just want to say that I'm also thrilled that you guys have all these options in place, and I know you're ready for whatever happens, and it's probably not a done deal at this point.
And one else?
Just wondering, I know the Governor had made some comments today, and I don't know how or if that affects the current plan at all.
I'll be going through those, Mr. Nelson, in just a couple minutes.
Okay. Any other school board members? Becky, Mr. House?
Thank you, ma'am. Just three items that I wanted to mention to the group. Number one, of course, on a weekly basis, we do provide updates to not only you all as a board, but also our community and students as well. And the most recent update that we provided to our community last week on Friday had to do with masks. As you know, at the secondary level in middle schools and high schools, we are requiring masks from the bus all the way into the classroom, and then allowing students to have the freedom of not wearing that mask inside of the classrooms. But if they leave the classrooms, move into restrooms, transitions to other places in the building, they will have to wear masks K through 12 now, across the board. Every student in the district, actually pre-K through 12. So that was the most significant update thus far. Being that we did make that update, we knew that there could be the possibility of some of our stakeholders that might want to change their mind in reference to going traditional in-person versus our virtual K-12 school. So we have allowed for them to make that change up until Friday. So we haven't seen huge variations at all in terms of our stakeholders changing their stance from virtual to traditional or vice versa. But we did provide that opportunity since we made a modification to the plan. The next item that I'd like to mention is something that Mr. Nelson talked about, and that's the Governor's recommendations. And I'd like to reiterate that both the Governor and the Commissioner of Education both came together along with the Health Department today and made these specific recommendations to public schools in the state of Tennessee. The first one has to do with testing and quarantine. 10-day sick window, which is, the CDC has made some changes and updates. Any test positive for COVID-19 must isolate themselves at home for 10 days from the onset of the symptoms, or 10 days from the date their test was done if they never develop symptoms. Fever must be gone, and they must be feeling better for at least 24 days. This wasn't a major surprise to us. Our Health and Safety Department had been up to speed on this, and this change is really not a change for us. Same thing for the next one, the 14-day quarantine. Anyone who has been within six feet of someone who has had COVID-19 for 10 minutes or more must quarantine themselves for 14 days. That simply means if there is a positive test and that that child or teacher was in a classroom and was within six feet of individuals in that classroom, then that class would need to quarantine for 14 days. If it means that individual was within six feet of 10 people, the contact tracing would start and make sure that those individuals would quarantine for 14 days. The next item is contact tracing. Keeping schools open for in-person instruction depends on the ability to quickly isolate and quarantine contacts is what the recommendation was. If a child is ill, parents should keep them home, which is essentially what we've learned along the way is the smartest thing to do. Parents are notified their child has been in close contact with someone with COVID-19. Again, going back up one section, there will be a recommendation for a 14-day quarantine. We have a school messaging system, which is what they're referring to in terms of texting platform that the state is recommending that we utilize to possibly assist in some of the contact tracing. On the last page here, in terms of immunizations, there's no change. The state's expectation is for students to move forward and get their immunizations regardless of whether they're going traditional or virtual. They feel it's critical that children receive their regular checkups and immunizations up to date in a timely manner. Immunizations mitigate outbreaks and preventable diseases such as measles and whooping cough. Last thing that I'll mention in reference to the Department of Education and the Governor and Health Department's update is the issuance of Executive Order 55 to allow contacts for us to resume. They will follow the TSAA guidelines. Non-TSAA schools must follow the equivalent guidelines, and non-school-sponsored athletics should follow the Tennessee Pledge guidelines. So what this means is those that were waiting, like football, volleyball, and any other contact sports, the Governor is putting them back on course to move forward. This one was a bit surprising because, of course, our athletes have not been training. And as a former athlete that played NCAA basketball, I do know that the proper conditioning is extremely important, especially when we talk about football and the elements of heat that many of them will play in. So they haven't had the opportunity to do that, and we were actually hoping that the season would be pushed back two weeks so that players would have the opportunity to move forward in condition and a proper way to ensure that they're safe. But nevertheless, this executive order pushes students and student athletes out there to resume play as normal. The last thing that I wanted to share is just some additional data. We've provided opportunities for our teachers to really let us know what they're thinking in terms of their feelings about coming back to school. We've done our best to ensure that we're listening to our teachers and meeting consistently with our teacher organization, both PET as well as CMCEA. And they actually did a survey most recently and provided us with some data. We went ahead and did a survey as well to all of our employees. And this particular survey provided us with even more information that, if I can get it going here, I will share with you. And what it says is, and we asked a simple question. After reviewing the most current CM-CSS reopening plan and updates and taking into consideration current precautions and the percentage of students in traditional, which is 60%, and virtual, which is about, it's actually about 36%, as Dr. Imperatris shared just a little while ago. Please rank how comfortable you feel with students and employees returning to traditional and in-person setting on August 31st. And you can see the data, about 21% of our employees that provided us with information. And you can see about 2,300 employees responded here. 21%, a little over 21% are very uncomfortable. A little bit over 27% are uncomfortable. A little over 20% of our employees are neutral on the matter. And about 19, a little over 19% are comfortable with moving forward in person on the 31st, and about a little over, almost 11 and 1/2% are very comfortable. So this gives us a barometer of how teachers are feeling because it's important. And again, you know, our teachers' concerns are our concerns, and we want to do the best job we can. One thing I can say, and I appreciate the comments that have been made already about our work in developing our reopening plan. I'm very proud of the product that we have created. We will stay the course in reference to our plan. We will take a close look as we get closer to the school year to see how the data is matriculating. We still do, of course, have three options. We have our traditional option. We have our virtual option for our parents that want to enroll in virtual schools. And we also have our remote option. That is definitely still an option that's on the table. And if it's some particular time before reopening, if something happens in our school system or at a particular school where we feel like we need to close our doors at a particular school because cases of COVID-19 have run rapid, or the county has run rapid, we would still execute those options in the plan. We will continue to take into consideration the recommendations that have been provided by the Health Department, the State Health Department today, and the Department of Education, as well as the Governor. But we feel very good about where we are in our plan, and we'll stay the course in reference to that plan. Be glad to answer any questions if one has any.
I have a question, Mr. House. When would the child, the temperature be taken? Would it be taken as they enter the bus or when they get to the school?
So we are actually looking at some technology right now. It's not guaranteed that that technology will be able to get it before school starts, but it's technology that would actually take temperatures en masse, which, you know, simply means if half of the people in this meeting were walking into a building, there would be a screen in the office, and that screen would actually show the faces of every child that's coming through the door at that time and the temperature right above their head. If they have a temperature that's in the normal category, their head would be in green. If they have a temperature that's elevated a bit, but not above the 100.4 temperature rating, then it would be in yellow. If they are above the 100.4 temperature, it would be in red. So ideally, Mr. Garland, we would like to have that technology in place. It's expensive. It has to go out for bid. Our Safety Department, along with our Business Affairs Department and our Technology Department, we're taking a close look at it right now. Otherwise, if we don't have it in place, we would be taking temperatures once we got, well, actually, we're moving forward, and our reopening plan spells out that self-checks should be happening, Mr. Garland, self-checks. So that is spelled out very clearly in our reopening plan. But still and yet, we would love to have the technology. The county actually introduced us. Mayor Durd reached out and shared that they had purchased a couple of these for the courthouse. And so I had a chance to go over and take a look, and we were very impressed with what we saw. So we're working to move forward and get this technology in place.
Do we have a bus aid on every bus or just on certain buses?
No, we do not have a bus aid on every bus. Bus aids, of course, are on many of our special needs buses. And then we do have some bus aids on our most challenging routes as well. But the typical bus route in CM-CSS does not have a bus aid on it.
Could COVID money be used to hire additional bus aids to go on every bus? I'm asking a question.
I'm sure it could be, but right now we have additional priorities that we're focused on. Of course, we've made a big number of our purchases for PPE. We're also, with the CARES Act money, looking at after-school activities as well for students to really mitigate the learning loss that we know that many of our students are struggling with or will struggle with. So we've really tried to focus our efforts. We're talking about additional bodies, which from a salary standpoint would be very, very expensive. But, you know, anything can be done, but it's all about prioritizing, and that has not been in our priority thus far.
I asked the question, Mr. House and the staff, because if we could catch the child before they get on the bus, we're just focusing on that child. But once they get on the bus, everyone on that bus would be suspect, right?
Everyone on the bus will have an expectation to move forward. We do have a requirement. There will be a social distancing practice as best as possible on the buses. Face masks should be worn. And as we know and what we've seen from the CDC, as well as the American Academy of Pediatrics, face masks are probably the single most important item in this fight against COVID-19. So the expectation for every student as they get on our bus is to have that face mask on. That is important in protecting each other.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes, sir. So I was talking to a couple of parents today, and they just had general questions. Well, one of the questions that came up was those students who are doing virtual learning, will they be able to participate in sports?
They will. Students that, whether we've moved to remote because cases have gotten extremely high at one particular school, three schools, if a child or a parent has opted to enroll in our virtual school, in all of those situations, students get to participate athletically and compete.
Okay, and then the second question, if you would. If a household has confirmed cases of COVID, yet the child is not displaying symptoms and comes to school, I mean, is that household required to report to the school system that, yeah, we do have cases within our home and for that child to quarantine?
So the Health Department has contracted with contact tracers, and the job of those contact tracers is to do just that, Mr. Nelson. Contact those individuals that have been exposed. The Health Department would be in contact with us to let us know, and their information will be vital in reference to us, again, closing down a particular school. You know, so we'll go off those cues from the Health Department. That's very important, and we've done that thus far. We did that last year. We have a strong relationship, and Joey Smith, the head of the local Montgomery County Health Department, is a part of our communicable disease team as well.
Thank you.
Mr. House, Charlie here. I know we can wear you out with these questions. I know Mr. Johnson, excuse me, in the Communication Department has had a lot of online information, which has been very good, and a lot of questions have been asked and answered on that line, and people are able to ask those questions. And I've tried to follow them as best I can. And for the board members, if you, once you get on that, a lot of the questions that we have, and there'll be a lot that we don't have, are answers to. But it's been very informative, not only to me, but to the parents of the school system. But at the same time, while I've got you here, I'm going to ask a question. I know that we'll be pulling teachers out of the classroom to go to the virtual school. And I guess my question is, once, will still be, my understanding, maxed in the classroom? And how do we proper distance those students if we have less teachers going to the virtual school for instructions?
So again, the expectation is that we'll start the school year off with anywhere between 36 to 40% less students in the school system. And that in itself will help out quite a bit with the social distancing that we want to focus on, not only on buses, but also in classrooms. We will have teachers that will be reporting to their schools, even if they are assigned to be on the virtual schools team. So they will still be reporting to schools. But the recommendation from the CDC and the American Pediatrics, American Academy of Pediatrics, is in best-case scenarios, doing the best we can with social distancing. So there's unfortunately not a guarantee that it can happen, but I tell you what, the numbers in reference to where we are with our virtual school enrollees helps quite a bit. There are some school systems that are struggling right now where they're only, you know, 10, 15, 20%, and have similar enrollments and similar issues in terms of capacity in their buildings that CM-CSS has. So this will help us out a lot. Will it fix everything? No, it will not. But we will be practicing in all calls, social distancing. We also, on August 7th, will be bringing teachers back, and principals have already been back. They have been actively engaged in professional learning, specifically around our reopening plan. How to plan for, you know, different portions of the building, what their schedules should look like in comparison to where we were as we prepped for start this time last year. So there are a lot of things that are going into the training and development, which is why we front-loaded our stockpile days at the beginning of the school year so we would have the proper time to prepare our teachers, as well as our administrators, for a potential return.
But will we have, if we have less teachers doing the virtual teaching, will we still have max classrooms for BEP standards?
Got it, got it. And Dr. Imperatris, that's from a scheduling standpoint. You want to take that one?
Yeah, we had three options, remember, when we began. We had the traditional option that could go remote. We had the hybrid option, and then we had the virtual option. And when we got the American Academy of Pediatrics, they reduced that physical distancing from about six feet to about three feet. And when we had the hybrid option, the pushback we were getting from not only parents, but teachers was around childcare and how do you address the childcare issue?
Charlie, are you speaking specifically to caseloads? A classroom caseload? 20 kids in a class versus 10 kids in a class?
I'm on mute.
You're on mute, Charlie.
If you have five first-grade teachers, and two of them are pulled out for virtual learning or virtual teaching, and so you'd have three teachers left, but you would be over the max for BEP or max for giving proper distances. I'm sure there's an answer, and I might not be asking it right.
Yeah, and as I listen to you talk, I think you were talking about the actual caseloads for each teacher. And what I will say is that... And what I will say is that as we work through through the human resources of what this looks like, we we definitely don't want to overload a teacher. If there are concerns with a caseload and being able to have some kind of social distancing in place, you know, we we can we can look at some other possibilities. But right now, we we will be filling those caseloads much like we would on a normal basis with students and and trying our best to adhere to to the social distancing within those classrooms without building above and beyond those caseloads and putting more kids above the BEP expectation.
And and we can't go above BEP, whether it's virtual. Virtual allow you to go to maximums. And so really, virtual allows us to be very efficient in our staffing. So if we had, let's say, Kenwood, we had six teachers, second graders that needed a teacher. But at Burns Darden, we had another 10. And then at Norman Smith, we had another four. Then we could use one teacher from that northern area to teach all 20 of those kids. So we're going to stab very efficiently with our virtual so that our physical traditional teachers remain at appropriate loads.
At or below, yeah. Any other questions for from board members at all?
Mr. House, will the teachers that are uncomfortable in returning to a traditional classroom, will they be given the option for virtual classrooms?
So virtual is not for everybody. What I can say, we're doing a, we're working through human resources for those individuals that have underlying issues, health issues, that can possibly receive the necessary accommodations. For those, and then this is something that the governor addressed today because he was pushed from the media standpoint. The question that was asked was the exact question that you just asked, asked Margaret, is whether if if there was a teacher that was just scared and and did not have underlying health issues, would there be a stance that would be expected at the state level for for local school districts? And the governor made it clear that that the stance is is that teachers would be back into the classrooms if they didn't have underlying health concerns that that required accommodations. So of course, that's not the answer that most of us wanted to to hear, but it is the answer that we got today.
Thank you, that's what I was afraid of.
Yes, ma'am. Other questions? Thank you, board members. That does conclude my other business.
Thank you. Good night.